My name is Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells, President of the Virginia School Boards Association, with an important message for you. April is VSBA Workforce Readiness Month. This month is dedicated to empowering our students to succeed in the ever-evolving new economy. Why workforce readiness matters? Future success. Ensuring our students are equipped with technical skills, critical thinking abilities, and adaptability to thrive in a rapidly changing job market. Economic vitality. Strengthening our communities by preparing a workforce ready to tackle tomorrow's challenges. Our commitment. We are dedicated to supporting our schools by identifying and promoting workforce development opportunities. Our goal is simple. Prepare students to excel in the dynamic job market. The challenge. In the next decade, Virginia will need to fill over 1.5 million highly skilled jobs. To meet this demand, college and career readiness must be at the forefront of our K-12 education system. So join the movement. This April, let's come together and highlight the importance of workforce readiness. Whether you're a student, a parent, an educator, a community member, your involvement is crucial. So get involved. Attend events, participate in discussions, and spread the word about Workforce Readiness Month. Together, we can pave the way for a brighter future for our students and our communities. Let's make Workforce Readiness Month impactful and successful. Are you ready to make a difference? Let's do this, Virginia. Our goal is simple. To ensure all of our students receive the support and the resources they need to be successful beyond graduation. By prioritizing workforce readiness, we can equip our students with the skills, the knowledge, and the opportunities they require to thrive in the careers of their choice. So let's come together, united in our mission, to prepare the next generation for the challenges and the opportunities of the future. Together, we can make a difference. Join us in celebrating VSBA's Workforce Readiness Month, and let's empower our students for a prosperous future.
Thank you for having us. So we do have a lot of exciting events coming up, but I figured you'd rather hear it from one of our students. So I'll be sitting right here in case you have any questions or I can help fill in the gaps. But I'd rather have Reagan speak with you tonight.
All right. Upcoming, we have Friday, April 11th, and Sunday, April 13th, our Little Mermaid performances. Thursday, May 1st, we have our Spring Band Concert. Saturday, May 3rd is RHS Prom. Tuesday, May 6th is the Spring Choir Concert, and Friday, May 23rd is Graduation. For the Bobcat Theater Company, we would all appreciate it if you would join us at RHS April 11th at 7:00 p.m., the 12th at 7:00 p.m., and the 13th at 2:00. As we take a trip under the sea with our spring musical, The Little Mermaid, the show features over 60 RCPS students from McCarg, Bell Heath, Dalton, and RHS. Tickets are $5 for RCPS students and $7 for adults. We hope to see you there. The RHS Band and Dalton Intermediate is Thursday, May 1st at 7:00 p.m. And then for Prom, our theme is Tangled Within Our Memories, and the location is Nestle Run. It'll be at 7:30 to 10:30 p.m. with floor show from 7 to 7:30. Tickets will be sold April 28th through May 2nd during both lunches for $20 each. Spirit Days, Mondays, Barbecue Dads for Soccer Moms, my personal favorite. Tuesday is Mathlete vs Athlete. Wednesday, Senior Citizen Day. Thursday, Rhyme Without Reason. And Friday, Celebrity Day. For the RHS Choir, we have the Spring Choir Concert Tuesday, May 6th at 7:00 p.m. at the Bondurgh Auditorium at RBU. And Graduation, May 23rd at 7:00 p.m., hopefully at Bobcat Stadium, weather permitting. And then coming up, the dates aren't set in stone yet for the 2025 celebrations, but for seniors, we have Baccalaureate Services, Senior Award Ceremony, Senior Athletics Banquet, Senior Video, Yard Signs, and Main Street Banners coming.
So the plan is definitely to be outside at Bobcat Stadium. So that's Plan A and Plan B. So if we have to move it to Saturday, the students and others have said they want to have it at the stadium, so we're going to try to make that happen. Plan C is we do have Bondurgh all weekend as a backup plan if necessary, but we're going to try to do it outside. I think that's everyone's first choice.
And then to celebrate some accomplishments over the past couple of weeks, for Forensics, we had our high school forensics team finish as the 2A State Runner Rope, and Frankie Jones placed second place in original oratory. Mickey Barron placed second place in storytelling. Katherine Wonski placed first place in serious dramatic interpretation. James Reif and Colin Barron got first place in humorous duo interpretation. And Summer Fisher and Seth Barron won second place in serious duo interpretation. For the State History Day competition, you already heard a little bit about this, but we had 10 students from the high school qualify and will be headed to the state competition on April 27th. Ellie Steele, Victoria Robinson, Sammy Weingartner, Brooklyn Williams, Tristan Lineberry, Joseph Epley, Nicholas Keeling, Aiden Klein, Alex Bartos, and Jayden Moss. Our Chamber Ensemble had all superior ratings at district assessment. Seven students have qualified for state competitions later this month. Mickey Barron, Seth Barron, Colin Barron, Jay Anziani, Alex Bernathy, Kate DeShawn, and Gavin Myers from Dalton Intermediate. We had 204 passing scores on our Workplace Readiness Test. This is a reflection of lots of hard work from teachers and students to prepare. It fulfills graduation requirements and helps students become CTE completers. And then we would love to recognize Mr. Jeff Brown as our Region 7 Teacher of the Year. He will attend a ceremony and reception in Richmond on May 7th where the State Teacher of the Year will be announced. He is one of eight regional finalists for the award. On April 15th, we'll host a blood drive from 10 to 3. All staff members and students who are 18 may participate, and students who are 6 and or 17 years old must have apparent permission to participate. And then for spring sports, we have a very busy week coming up. Tomorrow, we have girls tennis, boys soccer, varsity baseball and softball versus Patrick County. On Thursday, we have girls tennis, and I don't think us, but... And then on Friday, we have varsity baseball and softball versus Allegheny, and JV soccer girls versus Abingdon. Come out and support our Bobcats.
Thank you very much.
What is the Workplace Readiness Test? I mean, in a real short version?
Workplace Readiness, each CTE course has, instead of having standards of learning, they have competency lists.
Oh, okay, so it's just for CTE students. Okay, gotcha.
Correct. And so all those CTE courses have the first 15 or 20 standards are workplace readiness.
Okay.
So anytime a student takes one of those courses, they can, that's an industry credential that kind of applies to all CTE courses.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
So we're looking forward to the streets and the yards being decked in Bobcat colors with the names of all the graduates. It's a very exciting time for the city of Radford. I know they are very cooperative in letting us, you know, hang our signs on the streets poles and things like that, so it's very nice. Downtown really looks nice.
All that will be coming together very soon. And once we have those dates on that last slide, we're going to send out on social media, power announcement home, and we'll even be putting it in the mail because students will be receiving their course request for next year. And like the seniors in particular, we'll get kind of senior dates, right? Just to communicate multiple ways with families.
Fun times.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, Mr. Di, if you don't mind, would you throw up the enrollment, attendance, and behavior reports, please? Thank you. Probably one of the largest overall enrollment numbers that we've seen in a long time, if not the largest. Some of that is due to our residential numbers increasing, which we're very happy to report, and some of that is also the virtual enrollment increase. Questions about enrollment? Okay, Mr. Di, attendance. So there's the Bobcat attendance stats for RCPS for March. Very good numbers in the 90s. This is a tough time of year. As we alluded to earlier, there are folks that are missing things for various reasons. A lot of those are sickness. I know that Dalton had a really hard time last week with some sickness, a spike in out of attendance, absences. So we understand that, but holding strong in the 90s, that's what we like to see.
Well, it was a close one between McCarg and Dalton.
Mm-hmm. Did you demand a recount? I think you did.
I did. Our WES cheated for Dalton. All those students were there to take a test.
Yes, yes.
We don't have a test to take.
Oh, no. Y'all need a handicap or something, right?
Right, yeah, sorry. What a good idea. So are you placing that in protest? Because it's so noted. Maybe, maybe April. Okay, thank you, Mr. Di. Student Behavior, field, go ahead and, yeah, there you go. Thank you. So McCarg, month to month, way down in March. That's very impressive considering February is generally a short month for a couple of reasons. I have mine in front of me, but obviously that's last year. Looks very nice. Bell Heath, again, right there with February and a decrease from a year ago, so we appreciate that. For Dalton, it's a decrease in last month and last year. Very impressive numbers at nine. Thank you. And for the high school, again, down from 21 in February of this year and way down from 32 a year ago. So we appreciate all the hard work that goes into this type of thing from both students, teachers, and families, but mostly administration for helping us on a tight ship. So thank you, Mr. Di, for having us go through those. Next up, I'd like to welcome Dr. McDaniel to the podium. Dr. McDaniel is going to talk to us about a really neat idea that has been, she's been working on for a long time to help our paraprofessionals get licensed. Dr. McDaniel.
Well, this came partially out of our Title I monitoring, which was done earlier in the year, and we did great on that. Ms. Cox did a wonderful job having everything ready to go, but one thing that came up out of that was a suggestion to have our, all of our paraprofessionals highly qualified, which is a requirement through of our paraprofessionals highly qualified, which is a requirement through regulations. So I don't think we've really had a big issue with this before because one of the ways they're highly qualified is to have an associate's degree or higher or have two years of college credits. And most of our paraprofessionals in the past have had that. This year, when we went through monitoring, out of the 22, particularly for Bell Heath and McCarg because those are our Title I schools, out of the 22 paraprofessionals, only five of them didn't already have the college credits required. So what we're presenting to you tonight is an administration guide for a paraprofessional local assessment. And for them to be highly qualified, this very much mimics the assessment that is approved by the state. But if you'll, yeah, there we go. If you look at this little chart, it shows you a comparison between what is approved by the state and what we're proposing. Now, we didn't put a copy of the assessment in your packet because we obviously can't post that online because that would, you know, invalidate our test.
That's cheating.
I do have copies of it if you want to look at it, but I'm not going to post that anywhere.
It's embargoed.
It is. So it looks very much like an SOL test, to be honest. It has reading, writing and math assessment sections. And so it has to be paired with instructional content and so forth. The state assessment has 90 questions. Ours has 70, so it's still a pretty rigorous test. They can take it in three parts. They don't have to take it all at one time. But the main advantage is that the state assessment costs $85 out of their pocket to take. If we approve a local assessment, we can give it for free because we will just do it here. We will score it here and we will certify them locally as highly qualified paraprofessionals. So that's what we're proposing is that we allow our pairs to take a local assessment that very much looks like the state-approved assessment so that we can certify them as highly qualified on a local level.
Probably one of our most unappreciated and not by, not on purpose, but groups of educators that we have in this division and any division are the paraprofessionals that do so much to help kids, you know, learn, maybe in a small group setting, maybe in a differentiated setting of another type. But these professionals, you know, work really, really hard. And a lot of times, we don't, we don't show them the love that we should. And I think this is one small way we can do that.
And another advantage of having a local assessment is if they don't pass a section of it, we can allow them to, you know, get a little bit of help and study a little bit. They'll, you know, know what to expect and then they can retake it without having to pay for the whole thing again.
Right. That goes back to, it's, we're worried more about what you know, not when you know it. So if it wasn't your greatest section at this time, then by all means, we'll give you another shot.
Yes.
Sort of like your driver's license.
Or the, you know, praxis test. That happens for people sometimes too, for teachers. Some people aren't great test takers, so.
I just think this is a great idea. And there are other ways that we're going to include paraprofessionals more in our planning and our budgeting. I think you can, you can tell a lot about how a group is supported by your calendar and your budget. So we have put in our calendar some new budgeted days for these paraprofessionals to join teachers in August and throughout the year on dates when kids aren't here so that they can be more part of the team that they're already belonging to.
And so they can participate in some of our professional development activities and again, feel like they're more a part of the school and, because they are a big part of the school and we couldn't do it without them because, you know, they support the students on a daily basis, hour by hour. So. Any questions about this assessment? Or like I said, I do have copies of the, you know, actual forms and things that we've created, but which we kind of borrowed from some other school divisions that have this too. We just kind of, you know, no, no use in reinventing the wheel. But if you, if you do want to see anything specific, I'm glad to share it with you. But like I said, I'm just not going to post it anywhere.
Sounds like a win, winning situation to me, yeah.
Thank you. From time to time, we've asked Ms. Long to come to board meetings with updates on our budget. Or not necessarily our budget, that's, sorry, I've used that word a trazillion times lately. It's more or less our financial status, good word, thank you. And so I've asked Ms. Long to have that tonight. And you see on the screen our various funds and their balances. Ms. Long?
Okay, so we are more than halfway through this full year, of course, and this expenses through the month of March. You'll see that most funds are still under 50%. I'm sorry. I've been spent more than 50%. And I think that's okay because you would want to be more than 50% because more than 50%.
Third, we just finished our third quarter, yeah.
School Board there, we will be, we have proposed a budget amendment to you all to approve this evening. So of course, that one will be changing. We've made a one payment for the local, for the virtual student services that we receive. So that's another reason why you see a high expenditure amount. The rest of the funds are moving right along and they're spending their health insurance fund. I think it's doing really well. I think this month, when I got my report from them, we had a surplus. So I think that's a really good thing for us. So is there any specific questions you may have?
Carrie, I'm curious to know, in looking at this earlier today, preparing for the meeting, in back of my mind somewhere, I was remembering that on the textbook fund, that's typically something we see later in the year, that the majority of that comes out. Was that correct?
Yeah, you would be spending that kind of funding usually in the month of like June, trying to get ready for the next year. And then you might see some spending in July as things come in.
Yeah, in my head, I had June in there, but I wasn't 100% sure. I just wanted to be positive. But going back and looking at previous years, it seems like everything's pretty well in line with where we've been in the past. So that's a positive thing.
Of course, we're now going into the fourth quarter, which is the biggest spending quarter for the school board especially, for Fund One. So the rest of the funds will probably be pretty much the same, but we have a second payroll in the month of May, which, you know, makes your expenses go a lot better.
Thank you for putting that together. Questions before we move on? All right. We'll stay with Ms. Long for just a moment. And if Mr. Di doesn't mind, we'd like to take a look at the health insurance rates and answer any questions you might have concerning our health insurance rates. 25-26 rates, if I'm not mistaken, according to the other division superintendents I've spoken to, we are not doing too bad. Some folks are seeing rates jump much higher than ours. So I'll let Ms. Long speak to that again.
Okay, so these are reflective of an 8% increase for all the total monthly premium. The employer's part is going to go up a little bit more because we wanted to keep the employee's part the same as what they were paying this year. So that is what, that is reflected. And then there's some other categories. And if you have married employees, they have a really nice benefit of basically whatever option they choose. Doesn't cost them anything. And then, of course, the last one only has to do with retirees. We do have some retirees that stay on our plan. And of course, these are the costs that they would have to pay.
So Mr. Di, if you'll scroll back up just a, and you'll see the employee's part with a dash. So that, everyone likes a raise. I understand that. But a lot of times, the package that employee receives includes more than just compensation. And it was very important to Ms. Long and Mr. Calfey and Ms. Boyd on the Budget Committee to see that the employee's part for 25-26 was not increased. So we appreciate the hard work in keeping that number low, up, keeping that number, not at all, the same. Questions? Okay. That is all that I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we'll move down to action items. And first is our Special Education Annual Report for 25-26. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, guys. I'm going to try to figure out how to talk to you guys and look up here and looking the camera.
We'll be watching you while you try to do it.
So we do this every year. Usually do this in May, but last year, we got caught up with the way the board failed. I was late turning into the state, so I asked if I can do this in April. So I appreciate you guys letting me present it a month earlier. So every year, we get, we submit a plan to the state on how we're using, two things, how we use this year's money. These are federal monies. It's filtered through, through Department of Education down to us. And then, so how we use this current money and then what we want to do with next year's or the money for next school year. So the big application that I submitted to you guys, it looks like this. It's kind of, kind of hard to follow, kind of hard to read, like all of our plans. So I did put it on a PowerPoint. That's a little bit easier for me to understand than, than reading Excel worksheet. So both are here, but we'll go over the PowerPoint. So, excuse me, how do we utilize these funds from this current year? So we use the 400 and some thousand dollars to fund these, pretty much these positions. Most of it's special education positions. We use it to fund 6.18 special ed positions and that's kind of the breakdown of those positions. We also use this money for professional development, purchase services. We contract with H2 for, H2 and allied for our related services. So we use companies to provide those services. We got so few students that require these related services. So this money is used to pay for some of those related services. Of course, instructional materials and supplies per their IEP. Some of our students need communication devices. So we'll use this money to purchase any kind of supplies or materials. And then we're required to set aside money for our students who are qualified for special education services, but they're private, private students. So their parents may choose to put them in a private school or homeschool, okay? So we, we set aside some money for those students. We don't provide everything in that IEP to those students when they go homeschool or go to a private school. But there are some things that we will provide for our families or our homeschool students. Next. We also get a small amount of money to provide services for our students with disabilities in preschool. So this money was used to fund .33 part-time or equivalent to the full-time position of a special ed parent. And then once again, we use this money in our preschool to contract out these OT and PT services. Okay? Okay, so that was last year, or the last two, sorry. But this is what we're going to do with this current money going into the next year. Nothing there. We're keeping it all the same. The breakdown there is the same with what we're doing. And then, so the total's there, 404,591. As you can see, 353,000 and 614 is used for salaries. And then the fixed cost is what, what that comes out to. So we have 1.87 teacher at McCarg Elementary, .6 teacher at Bell Heath, 1.79 teacher at Rafford High School, .67 paraprofessional at McCarg Elementary School. So that's a portion of their salaries that's paid for out of IDA. All right, next. So the remaining money, $7,000 left out of paying the salaries. And once again, we use that money for trainings and contracting out those vision hearing services and then materials and supplies per IEP request. And then once again, we do set that money there, that 3,289.98, it's a number that DOE gives us based on another report that we submit in the fall of how many homeschool students that we have receiving special education or could receive special education services. So we set that money aside out of this to provide those families and students with support.
Do we physically go to those students to provide services?
It varies. We do a, it's called a service plan. We don't do an IEP.
Okay.
It usually, it varies per child. Sometimes they'll come in for like speech services or occupational or we have maybe go to a daycare, some things like that. But usually, it's kind of worked out on an individual basis with the families, what that looks like.
Thank you.
Okay, so the preschool, special education, this comes out at $13,000 is what we receive. As you can see, 9,227 is spent on a paraprofessional salary. And the remaining of that, we'll use for OT and PT services. Once again, out of that, out of that, $13,000, we set aside $406 for those, set aside funds for our students who may receive services to a service plan. Okay? All right. As you know, it's, it's just a very small amount of money we receive from, from, from that. So the rest of it is local, local money that funds our special education program. So we currently have 17 teachers, K through 12, early childhood special ed teachers. In our budget, we have two. Special ed paraprofessionals, 23 full-time and then that .33 part-time. Speech and language pathologists, this is going in for next year, of course, is 2.5. We have two full-time school psychologists. And then the two folks there on the bottom help us out with referral process evaluating students. Educational evaluator, those folks are just on an hourly basis when we need for our evaluation process. Go ahead. The rest here, of course, that top one's me and then office manager. And then our parent lead is on there. That's will be new for next year. And then, once again, we contract out OT, physical therapy, hearing impairment and vision impairment services. And then we currently have three hourly, part-time employees that run our Parent Resource Center. That program is out at McCarg, but they do a lot for, they push a lot of stuff out for our families, trainings. And, but that's kind of separate. We write a grant every year to fund that program. And there's some local money that, that's also tied up with the Parent Resource Center. Okay? Child count, of course, a lot of our money, some of that first money is based on how many students. So every December, we submit December 1st child count. And so the top here, the top there, you will see is the categories of students, of their disabilities. On the left, there is a school. So that chart kind of tells you how many students that we have in each school with a disability and their disability label. So we, we have current 257 students with an IEP here in Rafford City Schools. And then you guys are all familiar with our out of district students, our stride students. So we have 107 of students in, that are out of district that have an IEP that, we do some work on our side with that as well. So that brings our grand total to 364 students that receive services here in Rafford City Schools. Next. That might be it. You guys have any questions?
How's that compare to your numbers from last year?
I think we were, our local went up two or three kids, but our stride dropped.
Oh.
I don't know, what was it? Carrie, do you remember? Yeah, so it kind of messed up with some things.
Okay.
Because our out of district kids, those numbers had dropped. So we, the child count was lower this year, but our in district kids went up, I think, like only three students. But then we lost some with the stride. So we've been sitting, it seems like we, about 10 to 12 kids, it seems like every year is more than the previous year. And a lot of it is. And we've had, that's December 1. I can tell you how many kids we've had move in since December 1 that, that have disabilities. So it's pretty, I don't, I don't know exactly what that number is now, but it's, it's much, but we also, you know, we have two or three move in and two or three will move out. So I don't know the exact how many at this date, but that's what we submitted on December 1.
Okay.
So I don't know the exact how many at this date, but that's what we submitted on December one. Yeah.
Dan does a great job advocating for that population, for not only the kids, but also the staff, so that he can offer those kids the same opportunity to learn as others in the gen ed population. So he works hard every day, he takes care of his money, takes care of his people. Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve this special education annual plan 2025-2026 as presented by Mr. Hill.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, now we're moving down to the amended budget.
So we're gonna have to pay this longer overtime because she's worked a lot of overtime lately. Many times at this time of the year, we come to the board to ask for an amendment to our current budget. So let me be clear that the amendment, the amendment we're talking about tonight at this time concerns this budget we're working in right now, okay? So once the budget surpasses a certain threshold or the amount of money in that budget, we have to come back and ask you guys to, to approve the amendment, okay? So that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. This current budget amendment is based on changes that are due in part to some increased enrollment and also increase in funding from the state. In March of '24, you approved the budget based on the governor's budget numbers. Since then, there have been increases in funding from the state. So we would like for you to consider this budget amendment. And I am happy to answer questions about that, you've seen that already. But this would include an anticipated staff bonus that is in the, that's in the budget plan from the state, which it hurts my feelings that they've asked us to pay this out of this current budget without having, in other words, we have to fund this bonus this June, on or before June, and, and they've kind of thrown that at us before July one. If this bonus were in September, that would have been funded from the state, but it has not been funded from the state. Does that make sense? So this thousand dollar bonus, which we're happy to, which we're happy to pass along, is coming from our budget. So it's things like that that make changes to the, to the current budget, that, that's why we have to have it amended. None of this money is coming from the city of Rafford. This is all money that's come from the state or funds that we've generated ourselves, okay? Now, did I get all that right? Most of it right? So you can see there on the screen, and we're happy to answer any questions about the additional state funding in each of our funds, zero through seven, eight. So, you know, part of a balanced budget that we, that we work on so hard is when money comes in, it needs to be scrutinized and spent, you know, carefully. And Mr. Di, if you don't mind, would you back up a page? So what you see there under Fund One are the things that we are trying to consider would make good purchases, trying to stay away from recurring expenses that we'd have to worry about again next year with no new money if that were the case. So there are some things that we are considering. We were very happy to get the RUSC grant, you'll see about halfway down. That was a, that's a thirty-three thousand dollar match that will net us about $250,000 for some technological and safety purchases. There's a tuition reimbursement that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, and some other things like some worn-out floor scrubbing machines, security upgrades, things of that nature. Okay, Mr. Di, if there are no questions about this page, the next page includes Grant Three. Of course, those are all grant funds, those didn't cause any of us any grief. And there's an overview of each fund balance proposed in tonight's amendment.
There are only two, well, there are three funds changing in total amount. Textbook funds, and of course, errors, school board operating fund, and then the grants one. Textbook funds receive state funding, so that's the reason for the increase in that one.
I would just say, probably not the opportune time, but to reiterate your point, Dr. Joyce, that Brian and I had the good fortune today to go to one of the schools on our listing tour. And one of the themes that we kept hearing was budget, concerns around budget, concerns around things. We all understand where it's coming from, we all understand, I mean, just the world that we're in today, we have to be very conscientious of budget and how to effectively manage a real budget. And I think that's indicative of what we're seeing here, it's on showcase here. It's, is it 3% or 5%, Carrie, that there's a difference, we have to go in for an amendment? I thought it was three, but when we have those changes, and it's, it's things that are, you know, additional students coming in, therefore we're getting more money, ADM money for everyone who isn't aware, comes in, that makes a change. You know, this is not where overspending, it's not where being callous with things. It's actually, we've received more in than what we anticipated, but it's over that 3% threshold. Therefore, we should and do announce to everyone publicly what we're spending on, where it's going, and why. But we also look at every dollar, so whenever these changes do come in, if they're not in a positive gain for revenue, it is an expense, the point purpose, and yeah, I'm gonna jump on my soapbox again for a minute, the purpose of having a reserve capital fund in a budget process is so when you have unanticipated payments, you have a savings, just like you do at home, to pull it out of. You know, whoops, didn't expect that that soon, that's what my savings account's for. You pull it out there, you pay it. But in this particular case, it's literally, you got a check in the mail because you overpaid a bill or because someone else said, "I didn't give you enough, sorry." So they send you the check, you're like, "Oh, thank you, oh, great, this is income. Now I've got to report it in personal case to the IRS." So you do an amendment to your taxes and you send it in and go, "Hey, I got this much more," because you have to be open and transparent. That's what we're talking about here, it's not that, you know, there's anything else hidden there. But also want to let everyone know within the school district, because we did hear a lot today, that people don't show up because they can't, they have other things going, they do listen. Everyone, we do pay attention to it, you know, Dr. Joyce, Carrie, all of us, we're aware of the budget. We're aware of a functioning, realistic budget. We try to be very careful with it. Every penny is allocated. And I am confident in every member who sits around in this school divis, division, if you find a penny on the ground, you're gonna find a way to turn it into a roll of copper wire and try and get four dollars out of it, because that's what we do. You know, we're not spending foolishly, we're not agreeing to things that shouldn't be. So everybody in the school district kind of, it's gonna be okay, we're gonna get through it, we're gonna be all right. Ninety percent of our budget does come from the state. Ten percent roughly does come from local. We try and help our friends with the city as much as we can, but there's a reason that required is required and optional is optional. We look at what's required, we go by that. Things that are optional, sometimes they have to wait. I'm off my soapbox.
Well, you kind of led into something.
Yeah, that was a great.
About, yeah, right, about our capital fund and how we use it. It also makes payment each year for Bell Heath, correct? And, and we have some aging facilities now that, you know, anything could happen. So we need that to fall back on. However, we're very cognizant of the budgetary situation with our city. And so we have offered from our reserve fund, $500,000 to them to use and they're, and they're trying to reduce their debt. So we're not sure how that's gonna play out at this point, but we have made that gesture because we, we know they're hurting. We're thankful that we have sufficient funding, that we have this funding from the state, which of course, when we get that funding, it, it looks lovely, but, but we're expected to use it.
Sure.
We're not expected to sock it away, you know? And, and so that's what we do, and we do it in a sound, responsible way for the benefit of our students and teachers and buildings. Yes, right. I, I am proud of how fiscally responsible we are as a school division. And, but I, I just wanted the community to know that we have made that gesture because we, we're not, it's not that we're not sympathetic to the situation, we are. Many of us are Rafford residents, so it hits home. Anyway, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that's a great gesture. That since 2008 was a fund that we were allowed to, to use for rainy day situations. We, right now, we're looking at a $50,000 unexpected expense on the concession stand at Bobcat Stadium for a new roof. Those are the things that fund is intended for. I think that fund is in a good spot, but as soon as I say that, something will go wrong. So I try not to say that. So, so with the gesture of, of $500,000 from that fund, that we could maybe help the city with as they see fit, I think it's, I think it's a really nice gesture and a, and a cooperative gesture, one of goodwill. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. So are we ready to make a motion to approve this amended budget? Does this then have to be presented to the council, city council as well? Okay. So we just all need to be aware, this money came to us and we were expected to use it, and we did. Okay? Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We received policy revisions in February from the V S B A, and there was some discussion about some wording change, which the V S B A declined to allow. So those, those revisions will stand for us to approve if we so choose. So is someone prepared to make a motion to approve the policy revisions for February 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. The paraprofessional, we need to make a motion to put that in our, on our action items? Is it too late for that?
No ma'am.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to add the paraprofessional local assessment that was presented by Dr. McDaniel to our action items tonight?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now let's turn that into a motion to accept or approve that paraprofessional local assessment as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, anything else?
No ma'am, thank you.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Swing, would you read us into closed session, please? Oh, wait, I skipped something. Reports of the board members, can I go back?
You can go back.
It was little print.
Well, I thought maybe that you didn't have any reports.
No, no!
I know he has a report.
I know, we, I think we all do. We were all waiting, okay.
No, you're absolutely welcome to go back.
I did not mean to do that, I just got on the roll. Okay, reports of the board members.
Well, as I was saying, Ms. Mosby kind of stole my thunder, but yes, we did have a CTE meeting. And from what I've seen, she's doing an outstanding job. All of her teachers are all over everything. Ms. Gibbons, what was it, April 25th for teachers, was that what she said? For our plants? That's exciting. And the 26th is for the public at 9:00 a.m., so that's a good thing. The two kids are in an apprentice program, which they're going to move, and they'll be working forty hours per week, so that's.
Awesome.
That, I love hearing that, that's great. But thank you for everything you do, and can't thank our teachers enough for what they do. And I hope to see more things come, but it's, it's awesome to see what, what's going on, I love it.
Next?
Ladies first.
I participated in several activities, and I got to looking at it, it's all been past week. On Monday, March 31st, I took part in the "I Love You Guys" event that was held at Rafford High School. God forbid, should we ever need it, but it was how to reunify families if there is some event within one of our schools, how to get our parents and our students back together again. Now I will say this, because all of the staff from throughout the schools participated. They, it was a hands-on learning experience. And we do have some budding actors on our staff, because some of them got to be the students, and some of them got to be the parents, and some of them got to be the head honcho in charge. It was really, and then they swapped roles. So they got to be different things. They, they experienced that very challenging situation in an environment where they could do it, and it wasn't stressful. And, and so they have, they now have been exposed to some of that and will hopefully never, ever have to apply it. Then on April 2nd, Dr. Joyce and I went to the Blue Ridge Spring Forum for V S B A, which was held at the Juro Center in Franklin County in Rocky Mount. A center we would like to replicate, but probably won't be in my lifetime. We took artwork from each of our schools. Last year, we came home with three ribbons. And I guess they thought we got all we deserved last year, and they didn't give us any ribbons this year. But that was okay. Now, the interesting part was, they bring students in, they do entertainment. They had two culinary programs that prepared dinner. And that's not unusual.
Right.
But we also learned that a member of the board there donated the pig that was then butchered by these students and prepared for cooking, which we were eating for dinner.
That's cool.
It was so cool. And these kids just stood there grinning from ear to ear. I didn't ask for any stories about what happened while they were doing that. But it was truly an experience. The president you saw from V S B A was also present, the president of Barham University.
College?
College, okay. I never know when the cross.
Right, right.
It's if they have a legal school or if they don't have law school or not typically.
Well, now you know.
Well, it's Rafford University, they don't have a law school.
Can't help you with that. That's why I said usually, not always.
Well, okay, okay. Anyway, she was the guest speaker for the evening, and really brought public school and higher education together and communities in, in terms of working together. Also, I brought you all back again. Did you pick up one off the table?
I did last year, so I have one, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Amanda, I've got your words.
Yeah, I could say, I better say, but I can't.
I know. The little pin says public education, so just so, I know we all have our Rafford pins, but we can also support others as well. Okay, that was that one. April 3rd, I told you, this is all I've done this week, besides work. I participated in a webinar on dealing with asthma and allergy, with allergies with our students in the schools. There are some new forms coming out that are gonna have to be applied. It was IAPening. We have to update our plan again. You always, you gotta learn something, you gotta update it. So I'll be checking on that. And, oop, missed this one. March 27th, I took part in a workshop, bonding as a board and bridging with our community. So it talked about how to work internally and then work together with our community members. And the main thing to, that's the main thing to remember is trust is the glue that holds it all together and it's essential. One more thing. Saturday, if you missed this, you missed a treat. I know Ariel and Under the Sea is coming up this coming weekend. As a prelude to that, Ms. Rupert and the students and the production held a tea on Saturday morning. And I don't have any little ones, so I stole my neighbor's two little girls. I think mom and daddy kind of liked that, but anyway.
Borrowed.
Huh?
Borrowed.
I borrowed, yeah, wow. And the students were there in full costume, they sang, they danced. The kids got tattoos, they made bracelets, they had crowns, they had wands. Colin was Prince Eric. So they danced and, and had a really big time. And there was food, everything was ocean themed.
I heard it was very nice.
It was wonderful. And the kids that were there had a blast.
Good.
One bad person, old people either, but they had a fun time. So if you get a chance, you don't want to miss the production this weekend.
Absolutely.
You just don't want to. Oh, and Ms. Rupert was going to, she mentioned something about she was going to send tickets to teachers to distribute to their students so that students can attend the play. So then only parents will pay.
That's a great idea.
Nice.
I don't know if it was all grades or just certain, you know, maybe younger grades, I don't know, but she said, I'm gonna distribute these, so that will.
Very nice.
Nice gesture, yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's it, I'm done.
Well, that's a tough act to follow for sure, but I wanted to say a definite thank you to Mr. Keister today. Brian and I had the good fortune, well, I had the good fortune, Brian got stuck with me with another one of our, our listening tour events in our schools. I had a great time. I always love going over to McCard. One, Ms. Keister's always very gracious and very kind by showing us around and very rightly so, very proud of the school, you should be my friend. It, it looks fantastic, everyone seems really happy, very direct and motivated to be there. Side note, I will say whoever was fixing the popcorn near the tinker lab, about 20 seconds less than microwave time and you're golden. It was, you know, it's, hey, we all get the munchies in the afternoon. I certainly can understand that. 20 seconds less, all I'm saying, don't tell who it was. You know, so just 20 seconds less is all we're asking. But fantastic time, really, really very positive thing. It's always great to hear what's going on. Really the feedback though, I've seen so far from the high school as well as from, from McCard. I haven't, didn't go to the other two schools obviously with work, but everyone is just so motivated. And they're so 100% bought in and I love it so much. It really is energizing to me to go out and hear the folks that are there and like, look, we love our school, we love our people, we love our students, but can we do this? And it's always very constructive, very well thought out. And it's, they're very positive things. And it's so energizing to hear that. One of the teachers, actually I finally did, we talked for what, 20 minutes?
Oh, yeah.
And I finally looked at her, I said, it is almost 4:00 o'clock, are you this motivated when you come in in the morning? She goes, oh yeah. And I love it, she goes, I love every part of this. I'm like, it shows, I, actually, I want, here's the joke. I wanted to go out and run around the park a lot a couple of times because I was so jacked up by the time I talked to her. I can't imagine how some of the students feel and how awesome it is. But of course, seeing the smiling faces of the, the students around the school too, man, it's. Anybody who can leave that building every day without a huge smile on their face, there's something wrong. It really is, it's such a wonderful environment. And Mr. Keister, I thank you and, and your entire team for, for putting that together. It's not that I don't love the rest of the principals too, but man, it's, I do eye screenings over there, I try and get there as much as I can because I just, it's inspiring to see these young people working with the, the very, very caring people that are there. So it's an awesome thing, but great feedback. Very constructive, very well thought out. You know, points that we'll certainly have to discuss as a board, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. If you didn't get a chance to talk to us, look us up online, look on the, the school district website, email us what's going on, don't be afraid, you know, most of us are not biters. One or two of us who might be, or really, hey Jay, they're really obvious, but it's usually from a place of, of care. But, you know, it's, we're not scary people, we're not, you know, in kind of weird hunt, we're just trying to find out, what do you love? If you had a wish list, we actually started most of them. What would an ideal situation for you be to resolve this? Or what do you love most about your job? And how can we make it happen for everybody? And people are so great to, to respond to that. So anyway, just want to say thank you for that. Thank you, Dr. Joyce, as well for allowing us to have that opportunity to go out and kind of dig around and listen and just get the voice of everybody on the ground.
I'm glad it went well. I thought you were going to say you were so energized you wanted to teach, which we, we were certainly going to make that happen, or sub, at least sub.
Not, not saying today, not saying never.
Drive a bus?
I've done worse things.
I'm glad it went well.
Ms. Winder, how are you feeling? Do you have anything you want to share?
I was just going to talk about how much you and I enjoyed going to Dalton when we did our listening tour. And I'll let you, you know, go more into it just.
That's fine, go ahead.
Through a barrel. But yeah, it was just, it was just so enjoyable. And actually, I would love for us to do this again and then us just switch schools so we can hit the different schools because it was just, it was just so informational. So I'm gonna let you take it away Gloria, because nobody wants to hear me talk right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, and she was supposed to be at McCard today, so she really was disappointed that she didn't get to do that. So Mr. Dobbins and I went to Bell Heath, the listening tour at Bell Heath, and then Ms. Winder and I at McCard. Hope that's not me. I'm not sitting on my keys, I'm good, okay. Anyway, everybody was so welcoming to us, we, we just felt the love. We just felt the love, really. And we received some wonderful feedback from teachers, some really great suggestions that I can't wait for us to share. And even at, at Bell Heath, Ms. Schrader's class, I believe I have the name right, she asked her kids to write a good thing and a thing that they would like to change. And so we got some great student feedback that I'm gonna, I'm gonna give to, to Dr. Joyce.
Oh, thank you.
But they, so some of the things on their, on their list included, like, they really like specials, like art, music and P E. Some requested more projects, more writing, reading for 25 minutes because they like how many books they have there. Two students asked for tests on paper, more recess, it's always unanimous. And, and one student, and one student pointed out that there are schools, I think in Montgomery County, where they get more than one recess a day. Another student lamented the fact that when they go to Dalton, they're not going to have recess anymore. Then Ms. Mucci's class also had some feedback, more recess equipment. And the person who wrote that one gave very good reasons why there is a need for that. One suggested having tablets instead of laptops so they're easier to transport. And two students gave strong, strong support for cell phones at school listing their reasons. So we had a lot of fun. We, I think we enjoyed ourselves, we learned a lot. And we even talked about maybe mid semester next fall, might be a good time to touch base again. So, but reach out anytime. Okay, now, sure, I'm, I'm glad that I didn't overlook, totally overlook the reports of the board members. So Ms. Wing, do your thing.
Madam Chair, I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the appointment, resignation and retirement of employees of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We are in closed. And opposed, we are in closed.
All right. I would entertain a motion to convene in regular session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
I would like to hear a motion to approve personnel 1.0.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, I would like to place the certification into our minutes that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were defined in motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in said meeting by this public body.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we had no student matters, we had no tuition students. So, the date for our next workshop, which is regarding our six-year improvement plan, is going to be held here at the school board office on April 29th, beginning at 5:00, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is May 13th at 6:00, here at the school administration building.
Yes ma'am.
And have a good evening, we are adjourned.